Do I feel that we have something to talk about this?
I don't know.
I have to fill out a form. Do I have to fill out a form for public, uh, state public?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Madeira Beach. And today is December 10th. And the, we're having the regular workshop, I mean, regular meeting. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Black.
President.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Douthur.
President.
I apologize, that went out of order. Vice Mayor, please lead us in the invitation and show our flag. Could you please stand?
Our Father in Heaven give us the power to discern right from wrong and allow our words to be governed hereby and the laws of the land. May cooperation be permitted and that the mutual aim of those who are here in attendance tonight so that all may work for the good of our beloved city in thy glory. Amen.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
You have to be on the mic.
I'd like to make a comment, please. I noticed that, well, last week, I picked up the package, it's with regards to the two agendas that we've received in connection with this meeting. And I picked up the agenda with 65 pieces of paper in it, read everything for tonight's meeting, and then on Friday, we were asked to, the city clerk's office posted a notice on our emails that a new package was to be picked up due to revision. So I picked it up and read everything that was in the new one, although it was pretty easy to ascertain that there were really just a few items. There were, one item was taken off the agenda-setting meeting, and there were two items deleted from the regular meeting agenda, and there was an additional applicant for the, for consideration to the planning commission list. So my question is, and I'd like for the commission to just either consider it right now, and we can maybe perhaps direct our city clerk, when changes like this have occurred in the past, and it's been deletions, instead of a new package being totally redone, okay, another 65 pages or 125 printed pages, which just seems, you know, a waste of really staff time and paper and printer time, in the past, we've always just had a new agenda printed with the corrections, okay, if we had deletions. Now, I understand certainly if there's additions, you know, then you have to obviously have the pages. But in this case, I really would like for the, for the commissioners to agree right now, you know, that we, we shouldn't have all this paper, we should be receiving two packages of this paper where we have to keep going through it, that we really just need a copy of the agenda making those changes, which is, which is what we used to do. So I don't know really why it was changed, but I hope we can concur on this and follow direction for the future, we'll save more trees.
Well, my suggestion, that might be, work out pretty well, but if you do have to do a whole new packet, I think it would be good to have the date that was revised and a revision number, like, was revised this date, revision one. That way it'd be easier at least to keep track of what we have in front of us.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Clara.
Because it does save a lot of time.
It does, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of staff time and other stuff. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure so I can get rid of this, this other one.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
A second.
The city clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Douthur.
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
Mayor Black.
Yes. We have no prior commissions, but our first presentation is five-year service by our Inspector
Madam Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'll read into the record the background information on Clint. Fire Inspector Clint Belt began his career with the Madeira Beach Fire Department in October of 2014 as a firefighter paramedic. During his five years of service, he acquired state certifications as a pump operator, fire officer one, and fire safety inspector one. Clint accepted a promotion to fire inspector in January 2018. We wish to congratulate him today on his five years of service and thank him for his continued dedication to our community. Next up is a check presentation from the Treasure Island, Madeira Beach Chamber. And these are donation of funds from the golf tournament.
From the golf tournament. We're delighted to, for the Heritage Track Center, to donate a thousand dollars to the state.
We have Mr. Hatch, our recreation director, coming forward, and this is a check presentation from the Wagawine event to CASA, the Community Action Stops Abuse.
Firstly, I'd like to thank the city of Madeira Beach and all the people that participated in helping us with our first annual Wagawine in Madeira Beach. And the reason we are giving this check to CASA, to Rebecca, is that CASA recently built a kennel at their facility so that the women that have been abused can take their pets and not stay in abusive situation.
I think that's wonderful.
So that money's going to help CASA and the residents, and we're just happy to be able to do this. And hope to see you next year.
That's great.
Bob, they make you keep walking further and further to take a picture, didn't they?
Yes.
You started there, and then went to there, and then over there.
The next one was. Hey, I got my exercise out the door, right?
Out the door.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is for anything that is not on the agenda. Please let mayor comments to three minutes and state your name and address at the microphone.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kapusta, 399 150th Avenue. This is about city fiscal responsibility, transparency, and potential fraud, and as a concerned taxpayer, I am demanding answers. First, there was a complaint of potential fraud that was brought to the city's attention in June by a taxpayer via the formal grievance procedure outlined by city policy. The grievance was never heard or addressed, even after numerous communications with the city about outstanding, about the outstanding grievance. On August 23rd, I met with Mayor Black and City Manager Daniels to discuss the potential fraud and evidence was provided by, to the city per their request. City Manager Daniels and Mayor Black stated that an internal investigation would take place as the amount of likely fraud was approximately $10,000. This is the email I received from Mayor Black, Ms. Kapusta. Thank you for your email and additional information you have provided. As Mr. Daniels mentioned, we will be conducting an internal investigation, and rest assured, the city is very concerned, and we will look into your allegations and get back to you after the investigation. Signed, Maggie Black. On November 8th, I inquired with Mayor Black and City Manager Daniels about the status of the investigation, but was informed that the city has not and will not be looking into the allegations of fraud within a city department. As a city resident, Madeira Beach needs a city manager who will take fiscal responsibility seriously, as we have millions of dollars allocated to upcoming city projects. I find this failure to take allegations seriously to be irresponsible of the city manager, or he is selectively protecting certain employees by his lack of bulliness to do so. Second, I have concerns regarding potential violations of the sunshine law. I have several outstanding public records requests. Some of the provided records have public information redacted by the custodian of records. A city department director and human resources stated that no relevant public records exist, yet I have them in my possession obtained from a third party. The city was also attempting to charge excessive fees of $100 per hour to furnish certain public records. The city manager is aware of these issues, but he has not required compliance of the sunshine law by his employees. I just want to make it completely clear that Clara, the city clerk, has gone above and beyond in trying to abide by the law, but the custodian of records refuses to cooperate. Finally, the city manager regularly refers to open-door policy. I have sent numerous emails, tried to set up meetings, and called and left messages about several concerns, and in most instances, I did not receive any response nor acknowledgement from the city manager Daniels. I asked Mayor Black to intervene, and only through her was I able to get any kind of information. City management is not the responsibility of the mayor. As a taxpayer, I have personally, personally spent numerous hours locating and analyzing evidence at my own time and cost regarding the fraud. Does the city want to spend another 50K on a forensic audit? The city needs to take fiscal responsibility of our money, and it better be now before it's too late.
Is there anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, mayor and commissioners, and I'll leave you a copy with this. I'm delighted to say that this Saturday is our Murray Beach Market, that the chamber, along with the city staff, has been working very hard. I commend the recreation department, they have been, it's almost too easy how they made it to work with, and for all the city officials who have helped to make phone calls and rally the troops. So please put on your calendar, not only here, but you at home, come out to the Murray Beach Market. We have over 50 craft vendors, food trucks, entertainment, and more. Thank you for your time.
Yes, I had a question. Where is this going to be again?
I beg your pardon.
Where is it going to be?
It's at Rock Park.
Rock Park.
Right here at Rock Park. And I did not mention, we have Mr. and Mrs. Claus coming too. So come on out and do your holiday shopping and support local. Thank you.
Thank you.
What time?
Three to seven.
Three to seven.
Three to seven PM.
And then the boat parade follows.
And then the boat parade follows, and it is on your website already, and it's on the chamber website, and if there's any details, feel free to call us. Thank you, I look forward to seeing you all Saturday.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Next item is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I had one comment on it, please. Under the consent agenda, under the approval of minutes, it's just the approval of minutes of 10/22/19. It's just a very quick one. We'll refer to page 17 of 126, down at the bottom. Under policy and recycling, all those items were certainly logical for the policy and recycling, except for the last two, and they had nothing to do with the policy and recycling. So can you either just make a separate place for that, city clerk? Separate, yeah, separate category, because it has nothing to do with the subject of recycling, okay?
Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, we'd make a motion to approve, make, after that change, the consent agenda, all the other items.
I'll second.
The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Weinstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur.
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
Mayor Black.
Yes. We have no unfinished business. Next item is contracts and agreements, renewal of city attorney contract. City attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city attorney contract is substantially similar to the last one. I did make the change that Commissioner Andrews asked for during the workshop, and it's found there on your packet, page 78 through 80. I need to take public comment before discussion.
Hold on, I need a couple things to bring up. Bob, there, was there, the documents that I gave you the other day, they were supposed to be handed on the dais, do we have those?
Sure. Let me go grab them.
Okay. I, I mean, I can start. You know, it's not, it's not relevant, and I can, I can go through it.
I forgot, I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right, I can read them. You guys kind of know how I feel about this, and this is nothing personal against Ralph, but we'll get you a copy of what I gave to Bob the other day. But statute, article five, section 5.3, it's a charter officials, officers, administrative departments, and civil service commission, section 5.3 is city attorney. The city attorney shall act as legal advisor to and an attorney for the city and all of its officers and employees in matters arising out of performances of their official duties for the city. Question we have to ask ourselves is, do we feel he has enforced and complied with this section of the charter? Judging by our recent conversations in workshop and meetings, the answer is clearly no. Our legal department is in complete chaos, clearly has no direction, doesn't follow any particular rules or charter rules, and is subject to no particular budget, per se. We also seem to be hiring a whole bunch of outside attorneys because our city attorney lacks the experience, the expertise required. What we really need in a city attorney is for that person to be the director of our legal department, and that's really not happening. But here's the most important one, and when I, when I tell you about this, and I'll read, get back to this in a minute. The section that I'm talking about in the charter that you'll get is four paragraphs long, that's how long the city attorney section is, okay? This is the important one for today's discussion. The Board of Commissioners may contract with such other attorneys or firm of attorneys to perform such services on behalf of the city on specialized projects as may be deemed necessary or expedient at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. Let me reread that. At the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. Me personally, I've seen and shared with you all at least 10 outside attorney bills from attorneys, and I'll give you, shout out some names, from the attorneys and names of Andrew Dickman, Tom Gonzalez, Matthew McConnell, and others, and all these bills were paid by the city. The charter, okay, our city law, says that the Board of Commissioners may contract, I just read this, the Board of Commissioners may contract. It doesn't say the city attorney, it doesn't say a former city manager trying to avoid getting exposed in a grievance hearing, it says the Board of Commissioners, okay, and nobody else may contract. Bob, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is it fair to say it's your understanding that in your capacity as city manager?
Bob's not here, he's not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't even look up. Bottom line, the hiring outside counsel is the board's right, and this board's rights alone, okay? But all of you guys have been here for the entire, besides Commissioner Weinstein, by a few months, but you've all been here for the entire span of Ralph's employment. And like a quick show of hands, have you ever voted to give discretion to the hiring of attorneys Dickman, Gonzalez, McConnell, or any other attorney for that matter? Heck, you've met some of them, some have been sat in our meetings, they're all being paid while they're here, and they're being paid well, and I assure you, none of them is here working for free. Folks, this is in our charter, this is article five, section five, it's right here, it will be right here in front of you. It's four short paragraphs, and it's titled city attorney. I find it hard to believe that a reputable attorney wouldn't read his own section of the charter and make sure he follows it, especially when it's only four paragraphs long. Now, let's quickly look at page 79. This is Mr. Brooks's contract. Give me a minute, I'll jump back to it here. Page 79, please, I'm going to read the last sentence of number six, okay? If there is any legal matter, including matters which would otherwise be included under the retainer, which Ralph Brooks' attorney believes is outside the expertise of Ralph Brooks' attorney, Ralph Brooks' attorney may refer that matter to an attorney with specialized expertise in the appropriate area of law after consulting with the city Board of Commissioners. After consulting with the city Board of Commissioners. And the city shall be responsible for compensating such attorneys for those fees. In the two years he's been there, does any remember, any of you remember an agenda item to vote to use an outside attorney for anything, okay? What about a workshop? Doesn't mean, has that ever been bought up? Has he ever bought up he was going to refer a matter to an outside attorney? Guys, these, this is our charter, okay? It's never been discussed, heck, it's never been voted on, and it's never been discussed at a meetings, okay? My fellow commissioners, if your answer to this is no, then make no mistake, we have a charter violation, and it's incumbent on us to direct this, but I'll make it simple. Fact, Mr. Brooks and others here have hired a bunch of outside attorneys, namely Gonzalez, McConnell, Dickman, to name a few, and have been paid tens of thousands of dollars by the city. Fact, Madeira Beach City Charter and the city attorney's contract specifically mandates that hiring outside attorney may only be done with the Board of Commissioners' approval. Fact, during Mr. Brooks' employment here, there has never been a Board of Commissioners' vote to contract outside attorneys. Ergo, fact, the city attorney by contracting with outside attorneys, using taxpayer funds to compensate them, without Board of Commissioner approval, clearly violates our charter and his contract. It's been it any way you wish, guys, this is a charter violation, it has to be dealt with before we even talk about any renewal of any contract. Thank you.
I might address a couple things. I am bringing all the outside attorneys to you for a workshop on Tuesday to review and consult, and I know that doesn't address the past, but that should help address the future. Andrew Salzman is employed by the insurance company, and Tom Gonzalez is the labor lawyer. Both of those lawyers predate my time, they were already contracted by the city. Julia Mandell is a former city of Tampa attorney. The previous city manager came to this board and stated that he would like to get an outside land use attorney to review the two development agreements and the two projects so that you could be assured that you were getting independent advice, and he came to you with Julia Mandell's name, and I believe, at least by consensus, that was brought to you and approved. The first time I ever had a substitute, I brought the Andrew Dickman firm to you explaining that they are the city of St. Pete Beach attorneys, and I wouldn't be having them cover for me when I was unable to attend a meeting. We will bring all these people back to you formally on Tuesday for discussion, and then at a regular meeting, you can decide whether you wanted to continue with any of these firms. Gonzalez and Julia Mandell are both in the same firm, Gray Robinson. Salzman is employed by the insurance council, but we could tell the insurance company we don't want to use Andrew Salzman anymore, we want to have a different attorney, and that's, that's a possibility, has been representing the city as insurance defense council for many, many years. And then we can also talk about whether we want to continue to use the Dickman law firm for any other issues, including when I need a substitute. And the way I've set it up with Walt is that when they're substituting for me, I'm paying them out of my check, they're not paying them out of the city. Sometimes we've had Matt, Matthew McConnell come and represent a board, like the grievance committee, if we need to have two attorneys, and, and he had a good idea when he was here. He said, if we're going to do that in the future, I'll come to you and say, we have a, a meeting coming up, a grievance committee, we want to have another lawyer there to sit with the committee and provide advice, rather than me, and maybe have both of us there, you could decide how you want to do that. We did address it previously, I'm not sure which commissioners were all involved, but we did talk about HR becoming staff for the grievance committee and not the clerk, and that the city attorney would be there if requested. So we can address those as they come up as well. So I do intend on, on bringing all these to you, and hopefully that will help us going forward.
So you intend on following the charter now?
I, I always intend on following the charter.
So you're admitting breaking the charter by hiring people without coming to the board first?
No, that, I believe that Salzman and Tom Gonzalez have always been, and I believe they probably came to the came to the council before my time. Julia Mandell was brought to the council at that time, it wasn't, I don't think you were on it, this was early in Jonathan Evans' time when there was controversy over the two developments, and that was approved, so, and I did bring Matthew McConnell and Andrew Dickman's name to the commission at that time when I first had a substitute, you weren't on the commission.
Was there ever a vote?
I'm sorry.
I know, I have been watching every commission meeting before I ran, I've, I've seen and I've done research, I'm speaking now, Ralph, sorry. I've watched every commission meeting, I've seen every agenda, there has never been a vote, you've never introduced a lawyer and said, hey, may they represent us because I don't have the expertise in this, like our charter calls for. Ralph, you just admitted to breaking the charter, and now you laugh about it. Terrific. Um, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a couple comments, please.
I don't think that there's been a violation of the city charter, and I don't believe that that's correct.
Want me to read it again?
Well, I have it here in front of me.
Well, then, then how can you say that's not a violation of the city charter? The Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners may contract with such other attorneys or firm of attorneys to perform such services on behalf of the city on specialized projects as may be deemed necessary or expedient at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners.
As I've stated, Tom Gonzalez predated my time.
Ralph, you're backtracking, and this doesn't matter, there are attorneys that have not been bought to this commission that you, you have hired.
Point taken, I have not hired any attorneys except for Matthew McConnell to appear here when I was a substitute. Other than that, Tom Gonzalez predated, Julia Mandell was approved by this commission to be outside land use counsel and review those two development agreements, and this commission approved that. I don't know if there was a by vote or by consensus, but they approved it, and I know that on occasion, Andrew Salzman has represented this city, he's not contracted with the city or the Board of Commissioners, he's contracted by the insurance company.
Andrew Salzman doesn't, Andrew Salzman doesn't have to be bought into this conversation, he's, he's with the insurance company. We have outside attorneys that we are paying bills to, that you are approving bills for and have hired, that, I don't care if they predate us or not, you need to come to us with every attorney that needs, and you're doing it now, that shows that you know you're breaking the charter. You said you're going to bring them here to meet us on Tuesday.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I made my point, thanks.
Mayor, I have a few comments that I'd like to make. Since I've been on the commission since March of 2018, for instance, I know that Dickman and McConnell have certainly been here when the city attorney has been unable to be here, and that's his responsibility. I do distinctly remember Julia Mandell being presented to us by either the community development department, okay, or the former city manager, saying, we need, let's talk about it, we all need a land use attorney, okay? We all talked about it, and I don't know if it was in a workshop or a meeting, but I have to say that if Commissioner Andrews has seen every single meeting and listened to every single live streaming, then something has been missed, because I do remember confirming that we should use a land use attorney, you know, that we should use, and Julia Mandell was the one who was brought to us, and as far as Gonzalez, he predates all of us, I bet you, and has.
It doesn't matter who predates anybody, Commissioner.
I have the floor.
Okay, go ahead, I'm just, I'm just clarifying that for you.
I have the floor.
I'm speaking in facts, not conjecture, so I just hope you do the same thing, thank you.
Yes. So anyway, my point is, is that we have followed, the commission has been the one who has possibly not voted on it, but made a consensus that certain outside legal assistance has to be hired, and we did it, you know? I don't remember the date, certainly. I do, in connection back with the topic that we have at hand, which is certainly not what we started off with, but I believe the comment is for the city attorney's contract, right? That's where we are, that's what we're supposed to be doing, the, is that right?
I'll bring the other contracts to you at the next workshop, and then we'll formally approve them at the next regular meeting for the outside attorney contracts. Those will be separate contracts from mine, but they'll be brought before you for a formal vote and approval.
That's fine, but the agenda tonight is for the renewal of the city attorney contract, is for the renewal of, right, okay? And I, yeah, and I, I do think that we need to go out for bids on it. I think that we can talk with the, we can renew certainly on a temporary basis if this current city attorney is, if he says that that's fine with him, I think that we should keep him retained, but I do think that we owe it to the city, and we owe it to the taxpayers to go out for RFP, and I, we've, I think we've had a lot of confusion on it in the last six months. I think I started off probably saying, yeah, we should do it, and then backed off a little bit, but I do think it's time to, to go out. So I guess my question is to city attorney, is, or are you willing to stay on in it in a less than two-year, or would you consider that?
Well, I would ask you to approve this contract, and if you want to go out for bids at any time, that's fine, I'll resubmit. There are provisions in this contract that would allow you to terminate this contract, go for bids, and that's fine. The contract expires tomorrow, Commissioner Andrews has made a point of it, that I will no longer have a contract. I would like to have this new contract signed now, if you decide to go out for bids, and it's going to take you a little while to get bids prepared and go out, fly the people down here, bring them here from wherever they're coming from, interview them all, go through all that process, and I'm happy to serve as your city attorney during that process. But I would like to have the same contract, I don't want to be serving you without a contract or simply at the end of the last contract. This is on for the meeting tonight, I would like, like you to approve this, I'm not going to hold you to this, if you ever want to switch attorneys, that's certainly your prerogative, so, you know, certainly can, can do the RFP while this is going on, but this way, your city attorney has a contract while he's serving here.
Okay, okay, let me ask you a question, please. If, and I understand, I've read the contract several times between you and the city, and it is a, it's a sixty-day, isn't it? Sixty-day?
Let me check, it's only thirty days before, it's only thirty days now. Thirty days is probably not enough time for you to have an RFP out and interviewed and choose.
Well, I was just.
Until you choose a new attorney, I would be compensated under the terms of this, this contract.
Well, instead of signing a two-year contract, city attorney, what I was, I guess what I was suggesting, what I was thinking of is, why can't we do an addendum for, for instance, six months or even a year, instead of being held into, I know we're not held into the two years because it can cancel, okay? Either you can cancel it, or we can, with a certain period of time, but if it's more the, if the thought of the commission is not to, you know, is to, well, not to go for the two years, does that make sense, or do you want to just go ahead and do the contract, but still go out for an RFP?
I would prefer to have, have this contract if possible.
Pardon?
Obviously, I would prefer to have this contract for two years, and I'm more than willing to serve as city attorney. If you no longer wish me to serve as city attorney, that's certainly your choice, the choice of the majority of the board at any time.
And the contract states you within, terminate you within thirty days, correct?
Correct.
That's correct, under provision eight, Madam Mayor.
So it seems fine to go ahead and.
That's without cause, all you have to do is say that you prefer to have a new city attorney.
Right. I would like to mention to the commissioner here that I have personally used the labor attorney and the land use attorney, and I did not go through our personal city attorney. So if there are labor issues that I want to discuss, I can just talk to that attorney without getting permission.
Who are you talking about?
Well, you're saying that they have, they're going through.
We have, we have a department head of legal, that's Ralph. You're not supposed to be talking to outside attorneys without going through your own legal department first.
Well, perhaps I did, but it's not like he gave me.
But you didn't say perhaps you did, you just said you did.
If we have a special outside counsel in, in land use or labor, you are allowed to talk to those attorneys if they're representing the city and your city.
Ralph, you are, you are the head of our legal department, everything should run through you. That's what we hired, we hired a person to run the legal department, okay? So all of, all of our access should be through you. Now, you can approve, if she comes to you and say, can I talk to the land use attorney, you can approve that, but everything should run through you. You're our charter officer, the land use attorney's not our charter officer.
Actually, what I think has been happening is that they go through the city manager, and the city manager asks me, do you mind if we meet with Julia Mandell, do you need to be there? And I tell the city manager yes or no, sometimes I'm there, sometimes I don't have to be there, so, that's how we've handled it.
Okay, that's fine, I don't have an issue with that, I, you shouldn't be reaching out to attorneys that aren't working directly for you, Madam Mayor, that's, that's not how it should work here. I, you know, and with the RFP, I mean, you guys, this is the most frustrating thing I've ever had. I brought this up four months ago. I said his contract was expiring in December. I said, let's go out for RFP, if Ralph wins the RFP, terrific, we just continue on, we sign the contract. Now all of a sudden, everybody wants to go look at an RFP. Terrific.
Well, I think it's perfectly reasonable, Madam Mayor, to reconsider if we feel it's necessary, and I think that it is now, okay?
Great, it's perfectly reasonable, perfectly reasonable, can you sense my frustration? Four months ago, we've had this discussion three different times, three different times, and I got voted down three to two every time, nobody wanted to go to RFP, nobody wanted to go to RFP, everybody's happy with our legal services. Okay, I, I mean, I'm all for it.
That was the presumption I was operating under too, Commissioner, there had been two votes not to go to RFP.
Ralph, for once, we agree, yes, I agree with you on that, I agree with you on that.
I have one question, with the names that, of the attorneys that you listed, are any of those, were any of those special magistrate attorneys?
No, sir.
So, we're not even including the special magistrate attorneys?
Yeah, I think that's contracted, though, I think that that's, that's probably outside of our.
No, we contracted.
Well, yeah, so they, they have to come here, I think we have to vote on the magistrate for, is that correct? We vote on our magistrate?
I'll bring you that contract for workshop and for regular meeting, also include those in the attorney services that we receive.
I'll open the floor for public comment on this item.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive, Madera Beach. So, this is at least the fourth or fifth time that I've been in front of this board to say that we need to go out for an RFP for an attorney, because you, as commissioners, are supposed to watch our treasury and make sure that we get the best bang for the buck. And some of the reasons that I don't think that we're getting what we should with this attorney is that we have so many jelly donuts or fill-ins, it's just, I find that unacceptable. Also, there's nothing wrong, you may keep, in the end, you may keep Ralph Brooks, that's your decision, but to not go out for an RFP to make sure that you get the best attorneys or firm for the city of Madera Beach is totally outrageous. You are not doing your jobs to watch our treasure by doing that. You may like the guy, there's a lot of people that I like, I sure as heck wouldn't hire him to do work for me. Just because you like somebody doesn't mean that they're doing the best job for the city, and that's why you go out for an RFP so that we can determine if we are getting the best bang for the buck. And that is your jobs, not just to hand it over and redo a contract for two years, but my understanding that the contract can be terminated in thirty days, is that correct? So if you get the RFPs back and you find that these attorneys are in, have a different set of attorneys, or firm has a better service to provide the city, and you choose that, you can terminate that agreement and start another one. So, and I think it's the prudent thing to do for the city as a whole. You have to take your personal beliefs out of this, and you have to look at the physical responsibility for the city, not your personal feelings. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed.
I'd like to make a motion. It's kind of twofold, number one, that we extend the contract, which we can terminate in, within thirty days, and at the same time, we send out an RFP, have them put out an RFP for, because I feel if we don't have them under contract, you know, he doesn't have to show up, you know, period, or have anybody else here, so I think we need to sign the contract and then send out an RFP at this time, as quickly as possible.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion from the board? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Next item under new business is planning commission appointments, and I believe we have some people who have applied in the audience, would, if anyone would like to speak?
Ray Kerr, 583 Downs Pass Avenue. We've owned our home here in Madera Beach since 2010, however, we moved down full-time two years ago. We enjoy it, we want to give back, and my background is in construction, so I have a small business in the air conditioning field, equipment, not that that may be relevant, but I'm used to working around contracts and that sort of thing, so, that's why I put my name in that. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, actually, real quick, you, you applied here the last time, too, for this, right? For same position, okay, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Phil DiConti, and I live at 13137 Gulf Lane. My background is in aerospace, computers, and I own my own business for the last fifteen years in credit card processing. I lived in Madera Beach for the last ten years, this is my forever home, and I want to contribute as a citizen to help our city grow and be more modernized in terms of the planning, structure, and development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, if I may, since Clara's kind of one-armed here, we're going to, I passed out a ballot that Clara prepared with all the applicants' names on them, I think it'd be appropriate at this time, if there was any open discussion amongst the commissioners, and then you could go through the ballot and kind of do the first, second, third, and see if we can find a, some medium ground between the commissioners, and, you know, if we, everybody picks the same first choice, then we're in like Flint, but.
So, are we only supposed to pick three as opposed to five on here?
I, I think three, we probably, we should be able to get it resolved, if we need to go back, we can use the other two for another ballot.
So if you'll rank them, one, two, three, and place your name as a Board of Commissioner name on top, and then pass them down this way, Mr. Daniels and I will count them, since Clara's arm is still recovering, and then if it turns out we have a number one, we'll announce it, and then we'll ask for a motion and a second to approve that person. If they're tied, we'll tell you the tied names, and then we'll still ask you for a motion and a second to prove one of the ties.
I would like to say, just for information's sake, that the current, the current Board Planning Commission, that currently has seven members on it, already has, I don't know if it's pertinent or not, but they do have already three from District One, okay, so this would make it four.
You have to ask Clara.
Oh, is that, yes, Clara, could you identify, clarify that, just, or identify how many current memberships are from each district?
[inaudible].
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I think it's page 81.
It is page 81, yes. So, we can all look at that, right?
Yes, there's three for District One serving currently, one for District Two, two in District Three, and one in District Four.
Yeah, thank you, Clara.
You're very welcome.
I thought Jerry Clyott resigned.
I got a resignation for one of the boards.
I thought it was for the Planning Commission.
It was Charter or Civil, I can't remember.
No, she told me she wanted to stay on the Charter, so it would have to be the Planning Commission.
I'll look.
Could you check on that? Because we might have to elect two people.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, "I think Jerry Clyott resigned from the Planning Commission."
You know, if you take her off, there's actually six members serving. So, there's only one in District Three, and then there's one vacancy. It's just in the memo, she wasn't removed, that's what it was. It's the same memo from the last time.
Just for a point of clarification, can you explain that for the record, Clara? Because I'm a little confused.
Yes, the memo from the last commission appointments were just updated, and her name just didn't come off. So, if you count, there's six serving, and the red makes number seven.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we have one vacancy, and that's what we're dealing with tonight?
Right. Yeah, and according to our City Clerk, if you're on the Planning Commission, you cannot be on any other committee.
Correct.
So, that's why Jerry was on the budget and also on the Charter Committee. And talking to her, I thought she told me that she wanted to stay on those. You know, if that's the case, then her resignation would have had to have been from the Planning Commission.
You are correct, and those were, the rosters was updated on that. I just failed to take that off of this, and I'm glad you caught that. But as far as the roster, she's not on this one. And I do recall, I just couldn't remember which board she resigned from when you just asked me.
I might be wrong, but I thought that's what she told me, you know? So, maybe we need to pick one and a second one, in case that is the case.
Okay. Do you need your ballots back?
Well, we just can take the first two off of the ballot that we gave you. I was going to tell you, Debbie, before Christmas, please.
I'll read the commissioners and their choices. Commissioner Dowther, choice one, Ray Kerr, choice two, Ann Marie Brooks, choice three, Philip DeGrande. Commissioner Andrews, choice one, Ray Kerr, choice two, Ann Marie Brooks, choice three, Phil DeConti, choice four, Hank Bartels. By the way, no relation to Ann Marie Brooks for me. We're unrelated. I noticed one of the commissioners spelled her name with an E, like mine. Mayor Black, choice one, Ann Marie Brooks, two, Philip DeConti, choice three, Ray Kerr. Commissioner Hodges, choice one, Ray Kerr, choice two, Richard Willis, choice three, Andrew Blazer. Commissioner Weinstein, choice one, Ray Kerr, choice two, Richard Willis. There are four votes for Ray Kerr as choice number one. If I could get a motion to appoint Ray Kerr and a second, and then we could vote on that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ray Kerr to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Well, I think that's what they're...
That we need to do a second one because of Jerry Clyott, who is on this list. If she resigned from the Planning Commission, which I think she did, she did, she just confirmed that she did. So, we need to appoint two people to the Planning Commission, not one.
I thought Clara was saying, even with her, there's still only one vacancy. Clara, how many vacancies are there on the Planning Commission? So, we only had to choose one tonight, right? Can you confirm?
I think...
Can you turn your mic on, Clara, please? You can't, yeah, for the record, for the audiotape, can you talk loudly?
Let me go get the roster, and that'll confirm, okay? I have it laying on the desk.
Okay, let's confirm to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, if everybody will look at page 81, though. I mean, it clearly states the membership of the current Planning Commission, and Clara's right on that. I mean, there's, if we just appointed Ray Kerr, that's seven. That's seven total. So, we don't need any more.
Okay.
You've got Robin Delowski, Mike Wykoff, Mike Noble, Robert Preston, Mary Anne Hearn, and Merlyn Rappah. That's six.
Okay.
Okay, so if you get one more, Mr. Kerr...
Even taking her off, that's still seven, so we have a full Planning Commission.
Okay, we got it. My mistake.
At least we got a trade note.
Okay, so, now, the person we just appointed, would their termination date be September of next year?
The term expires 9/30/2021 for that vacancy.
Well, not according to this. Jerry Clyott, if that's the slot they're taking, her time ends 9/30/2020.
Oh, that's correct. I see where you see that. We'll have to ask Clara when she gets back.
Are we all settled on that, then?
No.
No?
No, really not, because...
Apparently, someone was appointed last meeting. You have to see which seat they were appointed to last meeting, which of these two seats, the expirations. The memo says that this term was to 9/30/2021.
Mr. Kerr is filling that vacancy, okay? Then, there's something the matter with Jerry Clyott's expiration date, correct?
I think we were not filling the Jerry Clyott expiration date. I think we're filling a different one. I think Jerry Clyott may have been replaced last meeting. We'll find out from Clara.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion? In the essence of time, can we hold off on finishing this issue until Clara comes back, and we can move to the next issue, which I think is going to be very brief? It's just adopting the RFP Committee that we discussed, and the only thing officially we have to just take a vote on the committee.
Can we do that without the City Clerk being here?
I'll take the notes for her, if that's okay. And we also have the minutes of the meeting, which you can go back to. I just don't want to tie you all up. If you want to wait, we can wait. I'm just offering that as a...
We can keep going. All right, so the next item, then, is the New City Auditor Selection Committee.
I make a motion to appoint John Dowther as our selection to the Auditor Selection Committee. And I don't second.
I didn't catch that. Can you say it again?
I second the motion.
Okay.
To make John Dowther, appointed to the Auditor Selection Committee. Will the City Manager please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
I can't vote.
You can't vote on yourself? I guess not.
You could vote on that. You're not getting paid for it.
You want to vote on myself?
We moved ahead and voted this.
No.
You said no?
I said no.
Okay. Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
I just want the commission to know, what goes around, comes around.
Congratulations, a four-to-one vote. Madam Clerk, we just skip...
While we're still here, if you could go ahead and just formalize and make a vote that approves the rest of the members of the commission for the minutes. We have Nicholas Roca, Tom Edwards, Doreen Moore, and Ronald Ronz. So, we get a motion to approve those members, a second, and then vote. You can vote them all together if you'd like.
We'll have to make another motion, so if you could...
Do you want each name spelled out? Do you want each name spelled out in that motion?
You don't have to spell them, you just have to say them.
I know that. It's Doreen Moore.
I make a motion to approve for the Auditor Selection Commission Nicholas Roca, Tom Edwards, Doreen Moore, Ronald Ronz, and John Dowther.
Good, you did, okay. Do we get a second? I'll second the motion. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
No.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is...
Do we want to finish up on the Planning Commission, since she's back?
Can we go back to 9A? Madam Mayor?
Yes, to confirm, that vacancy was to replace Jerry Clyott.
Okay, so the question that came up was the term of the position. So, they would, the term of that position, then, according to your records, would be 9/30/2020?
That is correct.
Is when it expires?
This is a partial term, yes, sir. It's a partial term.
Clara?
Terms don't change.
Are we replacing Jerry Clyott's position?
That's what you just said.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just left her name on there.
Because the memo said 9/30/2021. Is there another slot that was 9/30/2021?
Yeah, I just left that on there, and when we rearranged it, it got moved. But I have the roster here.
One, two, three, two. So, I think we're good.
Next item is the Roadway Construction Review Task Force. City Manager?
Yes, out of, Mr. Dillon has been working with Mr. Carrier on our roadway and stormwater projects, primarily the Crystal Island. And I guess it's my fault that I didn't get him officially appointed to the task force. So, he added the three members that had originally volunteered. He's the only one that's carried through and stuck with the project. So, if you all would take a motion to approve him, I'd appreciate that.
He's out of town, will not be back until tomorrow, so...
That's wise.
I'd like to make a motion to approve him to the Road Construction Review Task Force. I second.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
And the final item on the agenda is public hearing to COP alcoholic beverage use permit.
Madam Mayor, this...
Pardon me?
Madam Mayor, this is a quasi-judicial item, so I'd like this time to administer the oath that all testimony that will be taken by staff, any members of the public and the applicant, would be sworn testimony. So, if you intend to speak today, will you please take this oath? I swear under oath that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. And the only other thing that we would have on quasi-judicial hearings is an ex parte disclosure. If any of the individual members of the commission met with any individual citizens or met with the applicant, they should disclose that they met with people and discussed this item and what was said, who they met with, and that disclosure would then be adequate. So, if you have met with anyone, if you could, please disclose that.
I have not.
The applicants have come to my store at least once or twice, or four times. We never did discuss their alcohol beverage license, so...
No discussion?
No discussions.
No discussion?
Planning Director, you may proceed.
This is a public hearing for a proposed alcoholic beverage permit for a two-COP license for the sale of alcoholic beverage sale by the drink of consumption on premises, packaged sales in sealed containers. And I want to make the note that I always put the full definition in there, whether they intend to operate and sell packaged liquor or not. It's the full description, so that if there's any kind of limitation the commission wants to impose on operations, then you have to specify that. This is for the use named O'Shucks Seafood and Grill at 111 Boardwalk Place, West, Suite 203, and is a restaurant. As you know, as we've been through this regularly, the section of the code that's addressed, there are several sections of code addressed for the code ordinances. One gives you the obligation, actually, to review all of the alcoholic beverage permits. The other specifies the hearing or notice requirements for 300 feet. I do want to make a point that the property owners within 300 feet of the subject property were notified within 15 days, as required by the code. And then, the next section is Section 110532, which requires you to consider several criteria in the review of all alcoholic beverage establishments. The first deals with the character of the existing neighborhood and a review to show how it would mesh into the existing development. This request is not expected to adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. The property was most recently used as an Irish pub, bar, restaurant, and it already sold beer and wine. The area, of course, is a mixed-use area that's highly commercial and has other establishments that sell alcohol in the neighborhood. A replacement of one alcoholic beverage establishment with another is not expected to make a big difference on the character of the neighborhood. The next criteria is the extent of the traffic generated by the location. This is, again, not a new use. It's an existing use for the property. It's consistent with the land use and the zoning for the property and has been used in this way in the past. The traffic that would be generated and the parking that would be required are expected to be met by the same credits that they had for parking and traffic by the previous use. Additionally, we have to look at the exact location and make sure that its separation from various other types of uses is appropriate, because Section 110530 requires a 300-foot separation between an alcoholic beverage establishment and a church, synagogue, temple, or place of religious worship, a public or private school operated for the instruction of minors, or a youth recreation center. None of those things are within 300 feet of the site, so that criteria is met. Criteria number four, whether or not the use will adversely affect public safety. Again, this is a use that's already permitted in the area, has been used similarly by other uses in this same location, and the area is already patrolled in keeping with other uses of this type in the neighborhood. And finally, no application or review for this can be, can take place as long as the applicant has any outstanding fees or fines with the city, and we reviewed records and find that there are no outstanding fines or fees for this proposed use or the owner. So, the staff recommends approval of the petition for the alcoholic beverage permit listed as petition 2019-04.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. Not sure if this is on or not. Yeah. I did want to start out by saying, I know the application came in at the last minute, and thank you very much for taking the time to put us on the agenda for this evening.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Patrick, Patrick Brooks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Again, no relation.
Yes, no. No E on my name. And if there's any questions anybody has, it's the first time for me, so I've never done this before, so I don't know if there's any proper procedure. My fiancee and I are planning to open a restaurant, and it's just going to be beer and wine sales. Don't have any intention on packaged sales. It's just going to be consumption with dinner, and we'll be closing 9, 10 o'clock, maybe 11 during season. And it's more of a family place and a family menu. It's called O'Shucks Seafood and Grill. We'll have seafood, of course, because we're at the beach, but we'll also be doing things like Cuban sandwiches and ribs. like Cuban sandwiches and ribs and so forth. So if there's any questions or anything I need to do, let me know. Yes.
I just wanted to ask you, whereabouts are you located in the past?
We are Boardwalk Place. It is right across from the Friendly Fisherman. They're on the boardwalk, right there at the entrance of the boardwalk. It's, I guess, a relatively new building. I guess it's, as compared to many of the others that are there, it's been there maybe 10 years.
You are directly on the water, then?
No, right across from the water.
Across the street?
Yes, ma'am.
And floor?
Yeah, second floor.
Remember where Alma was?
Pardon me?
It was Alma, and then there was a...
Alma, that's exactly where they're going.
Oh, okay.
It was Irish pub there recently, but... So we're cleaning the place up. I guess they didn't do very well or had a very good reputation, but yeah, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, this is just a two COP, right? So no liquor?
No liquor.
Okay, cool.
Correct, yeah.
It started off as a restaurant over 15 years ago, and it was very successful when it was fish and chips and when it was a seafood restaurant. So I certainly do wish you a lot of good vibes with it.
Well, thank you.
Wonderful addition to the... To that area of Boardwalk Place. And you have satisfied all of the five sections of the... For the two COP license. So if nobody has any more comments, I would certainly make a motion to approve that.
Me, public hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to go to public comment first. Oh, okay. I think we have no questions. We're all familiar with the property, and it sounds pretty routine.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the floor for public comment now. Floor is closed. Yeah, I think it will be a great addition to that part of the village. It's been lacking in a tenant there, and I wish you certainly the best of luck. I think the name's great, too. O'Shucks. Yeah, I think it's great. So I will certainly make a motion to approve alcoholic beverage use permit 201904 for a two COP license for 111 Boardwalk Place, Suite 203, to be known as O'Shucks Seafood and Grill. We have a second?
I'll second.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthur?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Oh, sure. Last on the agenda are his reports and correspondence. City commissioners, do you have any reports? No. City attorney?
Not tonight, thank you.
City manager?
Madam Mayor, I actually have two to bring you up to date on. The first one is an update that Mr. Pierce has on our parking station conversions. Mr. Pierce?
Madam Mayor and commissioners, the touchscreen parking meter installation is progressing and should be complete by, actually, tomorrow. We thought it was hoping... We were hoping that we'd be completed today, but it'll probably be tomorrow. The first meters were installed last Thursday, and the parking team has interacted and assisted numerous visitors, and so far, the feedback has been very positive. There have been a minor... A few minor changes to the software that still needs to be changed, Spanish, and some other minus... Minor tweaks. The screen is significantly easier to read in the sun, and there is much less clutter on the front of the machine, which in the past distracted some of the users. So there's clear instructions. It's a lot easier. There's a green button on there that's big that they can push to get started on the process, and the user interface on the screen is also easier, easy to understand. We're going to be putting out a how-to video and post it on the website once the whole installation and the... Is complete. And we're going to continue to have a presence in the John Pass Village to assist visitors.
Mr. Pierce, yes, this is the conversion was the machine that we had here at the one meeting?
Yes.
On display, so it was that machine?
Right. It's just, it's not replacing the whole machine, but just the window and the screen. And again, the screen is dual-purpose. It helps better the glare of the sun, and also its touchpad operated, which, again, is a lot easier than the other window that we had on the previous machines. So we do think that it's an improvement that will... That our visitors will pick up and appreciate going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Sorry. I have one other issue. If there's no other questions for Mr. Pierce, there was an issue that came up yesterday. The county came in for a meeting with our public works director and our engineer of record, Al Carrier, and Jamie Erns, our public works director, in reference to the Crystal Island project. And the county utilities department was the... Were the actual representatives that were here, and Al has been in contact with them since, I believe, March was the first time of his correspondence with them. And I saw the records, but all of a sudden, they came up with a high-pressure sewer line that they want to replace as part of the project. And obviously, you know, our... We had a timetable that we've published, and I've identified that for you, but we're looking at the quality of the job and the disruption to the residents on Crystal Island, because if we didn't allow them to do it now, they would be doing it some other time, so they'd be disrupted again. So the... It's the recommendation of both of our engineers that we delay opening the RFP, which is scheduled to be opened on Thursday, and put out another addendum, I guess would be the proper thing to do, including this line that the county utilities department wants to replace at the same time. So what does that mean by our timetable? It would mean that we'd be opening that RFP after the holidays, so it would probably be somewhere between the 9th and the 17th would be the opening date. We don't have that down as yet for certain, because we don't have the information on the county's line that they're replacing from them. We do have a meeting with them tomorrow morning at 9:00 to further resolve this issue with them. Secondly, if you look, it'll take six to eight weeks after we open the bids to the RFP, and obviously, that would have to come back before the commission. If the mayor's willing to do that, we can call a special meeting in reference to approving the contractor, approving the vendor, and then they would need six to eight weeks to start. So instead of starting the middle part of January, we'd probably be starting the first to middle part of March. But it means that it's all one project, and it's done at one time, and I'm assured that we're still looking at 10 to 12 months of construction time. So it doesn't really change the construction time, but it does change, obviously, when we start, which has an effect on when we finish. So I wanted to be transparent. We tried to reach out to Chuck Dillon and let him know what was going on. Obviously, he's out of town. I don't know if we ever actually got a hold of him. We did. So, you know, he was aware of it, and I think his recommendation and some of the representatives from the citizens there would much rather do it all as... At one time, and, you know, do it the right way, and, you know, go ahead and bite the bullet. So I wanted to bring it back to you all, and I still would probably have that special meeting, because we have a couple other issues that I was putting on the agenda. So, Madam Mayor, if you're still going to authorize that, I can go... Once we... I answer any questions that you might have or staff needs to answer them, you know, I do want to talk to you about that special meeting, too, so... Is there... Do you have any questions in reference to that?
I did.
To the Crystal Island?
Yeah. Has this item ever been brought up before to the city that... I mean, how come all of a sudden now they're... They're just bringing it up? I mean, we've already started on this process, you know, five months ago.
And you're correct, and that was one of... Part of my displeasure yesterday when I was speaking to them on the phone, because this was just supposed to be a basic meeting to get together, to work out all the details in this project. And obviously, we're already looking at replacing water meters that they had requested, and they're paying for these changes, obviously, that are coming. We pay it initially, and they reimburse us, because it's our contractor that's doing the work. But it has to be part of the RFP. So I think we were all in shock when they came forward at this late date, but the bottom line is, you know, what do we do that... What's best for the residents? And that's why, you know, the engineers are saying, "Let's do it all at one time. That way, we have a brand-new road, and it doesn't get torn up again." If the county was to come back in a year or two to do this line change. Apparently, it's a 50-year-old line that's there.
Yeah, I can understand some people's frustrations, but this is a no-brainer from any engineering guy. I mean, there's no reason to rip up the road twice, and hey, man, who doesn't want a... What was it, a high-pressure sewer line?
Yes.
Nobody wants poop floating down their roads anymore, guys. So let's... Yeah, this is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned.
It was the one under the bridge? Did you see that? Sorry? It was the pipe under the bridge that you were talking about?
We actually... My public works director, Erns, and I think Al Carrier both looked at the bridge, and the line isn't under the bridge, so it must run under the water, is what we figure, and they're probably going to have to come in and do a bore, directional bore, to replace that line. So... But either way, it's less destructive and less destructive to the pavement and less destructive to the residents, you know, to do it all at one time.
Al, is this the same type of line that they ran from the school to 150th, like a year or two ago? Okay, thanks.
Since they're piggy... Since they're piggybacking on us, kind of... I mean, I don't understand a lot of this construction, but is there any way that they could be... That the county can be made to pay any kind of a penalty for us for holding our work back, or is that a dumb question?
Well, no.
It was not dumb. No question is dumb.
Right. And I actually, I was really... That's one of the points of discussion that I had, because we are setting the project back. Is there anything that, you know, we can require that they do? If we do have a loss of money, should they pay it? You know, say our construction costs, we can prove that it went up 2% because we waited eight weeks or whatever. And basically, that's part of the, you know, the business of doing these projects, is what I was told.
The answer's no.
Answer's no. Sorry. Short answer.
Did they chuckle when they said... When you asked them? I mean, was it a...
No, I don't think they were happy when I was talking to them, so...
Do you have anything else?
Yes, and the last item, there... In reference to the special meeting, because obviously, if... I think I have this commission support to move ahead with choosing the best option that our engineers have recommended. But I'd still like to have the special meeting, Madam Mayor, if we may. There's a grant possibility involving replacing the pump-out equipment that's at the marina. I think we've reported to you that we're applying for this grant, and we've got it. We've got the quotes together. So if we have a meeting before the workshop, an actual special commission meeting, we can resolve that issue and make sure that we secure the grant money for that project. And then the... Oh, and then we also have a resolution. We never authorized the $5 fee for the live-aboard permit, and we can do a resolution and have that approved as well at the special meeting, so that permit fee can be effective January 1 when we start the enforcement project.
Okay.
Actually, I thought if we do it the 17th, which is the workshop date, and we do it either at 1:00 or 1:30, whatever the preference is, since we'll only be having the one issue... Or the two issues, we could probably deal with those in 30 minutes, but it's up to the commission.
I think that's fine. Do it at 1:30. 1:30? Everybody okay with that? Okay?
Thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you. City clerk, I didn't forget you.
Yes. As I had explained, we put together some agendas today. City manager just went over the December 17th one, and I'll change that to 1:30. And the other one is the... Couple months ago, the board had consented to meeting with each of the committees, and we've met with all of them this month, I mean, this year. And the final one is the civil service commission, and we had that set up for December 16th on a Monday at 2:00. The day before the special meeting?
What about the special meeting?
17.
17, not the Monday.
Right. This one's the 16th at 2:00.
Probably, okay.
2:00.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
We have a special magistrate meeting that day at 2:00. That's a room conflict?
Oh, yes. Let me check, because there was one of them that was canceled, so let me look.
It might have been canceled, but we could... They usually don't last too long. We could hold it immediately thereafter.
Okay, that's what... You want to set it for like 3:30 maybe, or 3:00? 3:30? Be on the same side?
Go for 3:00, I think it'll be fine.
3:00, okay. And then I'll reference that on here and say immediately thereafter. And then if they've canceled their meeting, we'll do it at 2:00, be earlier to get you out. And then the third one, of course, we... The city manager had mentioned earlier on the town hall meeting, and the commission consented to discussing and putting together those items at the next workshop, so for that meeting.
Yes, and that would be the 21st?
The town hall meeting is scheduled for January 21st, which is the third Tuesday at 6:00 PM to allow more people to... The workers to get out and ask questions and all, and...
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right.
Oh, and to remind everybody that the qualifying period starts noon for the upcoming election, for March 17th. Starts noon December 18th, and it ends at noon on January 3. And packets are available in the clerk's office, and so that's it. That just concludes my discussion.
Thank you.[1788.02]